So.
All right, I guess I'll second it and all in favor.
Hi.
Hi. All right, we have a quorum here. So the first item on the agenda is Chapter 170 Sewers. Ed, I know you're here and it looked like primarily most of the changes had to do with income. So you're on record. That would be great.
Yes. Most of, yeah, most of the changes were name changes, right? Except for the two sections. The MIU permits. And I don't know if you'd like me to explain.
Yeah, reference, yeah, could reference, you know, the section on 170 that you're referencing and that would be helpful. I see it as 170.28. 170.27 under purpose. That's the section you're referencing?
I can jump in a little bit, Ed. So I think really it's, there's some of it that starts, it's Article 3, "Fats, Oil and Grease Pretreatment" is where the substantive changes, I think, occurred. And so if you look at, if you have page numbers, page, starting with page 26. Say that again? Oh, I'm just looking at what I got and it says at the bottom, it says page 26 of 32.
All right.
Right. So that's what I'm looking at. And it starts at the top, it's Section 170-19. And so it's really that, that section, which is Article 3. Where there's, there are some just nomenclature changes, but then there's some more significant changes. And the most, the most significant is towards the end. Which starts with, I think, as you pointed out, Madam Chair, 170.27, concerning miscellaneous industrial users.
Right.
So that, I think, is based on my review of things.
It is page 20, page 30.
Right, so the.
Substantive part of the changes is 170-27 on the bottom of page 30.
Of 32. And then going to 31 and 32. So that all, and you can correct me, Mr. Tosi, if I'm wrong, but that's all brand new.
Yes, yes. The state used to handle all the MIUs.
So maybe start, you can explain, what is MIU?
A miscellaneous industrial users. They were always, and there's also SIU, significant industrial users, which is over 26,000 gallons a day. I would say about 10 years ago, the state informed us they were gonna not be doing the MIUs. They were gonna be handing them over to the cities to handle and to manage them. And frankly, they weren't doing that good of a job, but we took the regs that the state had, pretty much, and reworded it for the city.
Right. So I think, so everybody understands. The state used to handle the miscellaneous industrial users. They decided, we're not gonna do that anymore. The cities are gonna have to do that. So this is a new section of our regulations to deal with miscellaneous industrial users.
Okay.
So that's, that's where it came from. That was the genesis of it.
Yes.
As far as the details, you'll have to ask him, because I don't know anything about it, except as, as he's saying, we basically took what the state had on record for their regulations and just tried to tailor it to, you know, for our purposes.
So we have a, now is working full time, Ray started the position of pretreatment inspector years ago. And as we were starting the FOG program and moving, having restaurants remove fats, oils and grease. It was a part, he kinda did it part-time, but now with this added on, that, that position's a full-time position. Some of the fees that are being charged there are to pay for that staff member to be able to do this work. I'd like to mention how successful the FOG program has been here in Torrington. 15, over 15 years ago, the guys on the collections crew would almost have callouts with blockages almost every night. Now you're lucky if he is, if they're called out once a month. And that's just from removing the grease from them restaurants. So that's a less chance you're gonna get that sewage in your basement and, you know, into the environment. So I find that program to be very successful. But, so moving on, now he's overseeing the MIU portion of it. Currently, the state is still handling the significant users. In Torrington, we only have two currently. Hopefully, that's gonna change.
Can you help? Because, you know, we're not in this waste.
Yep.
This, but, so can you identify what the two largest users are for the significant?
RBC. And Colonial Brands.
And those are the significant industrial users and the state.
Through the, like, heavy metals that they discharge.
And the state still handles those?
Yes.
So what this is and what the city's taking over are what are called miscellaneous industrial users. So maybe can you, who are that, who are those folks?
So they could be almost any other industry. We'd have to look at and see if they'd fall under this. Repair shops. So, any, any other small industrial, industrial plant would fall under this. We'd have to make sure that they're not doing a dis, we're not receiving a discharge that would harm our system.
What's the check process for that?
So, so, right, so our compliance officer could do pop-ins. But to, not that, unless we suspect something, I would suspect only when the permit has to be renewed every three years, he'd go do an inspection of the facility at that point. But, you know, we have a crew out there looking at the system. If they were to see a problem that our compliance officer would have the ability to be able to, to do more of an inspection.
But this is, this is, this is standardized every three years? Everybody gets?
Yeah, a permit.
A compliance officer?
Yes.
Is, is there any, is there any is there any process by which the firm being assessed has to notify the city if they change whatever the discharge is by, you know, some, some preordained delta, you know? If they increase by?
If their, if their discharge is changing to a, either a contaminant or a amount of flow, yes, they have to, there's, they are supposed to.
By law or by?
Well, what, what? That would be an ordinance.
If we pass this ordinance, that then will have some teeth to it? No? Yes or no?
Yeah, yeah.
If they don't comply, is there, is there a monetary?
I think we always had a monetary ability to do fines, but we try not to. It's a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars a day is usually the fine.
Right, but that seems kind of rubbery to me. I mean, if, if we're going to be doing this and doing it fairly, equitably, and for the purpose of actually being a self, self-funding process, shouldn't that be, you know, shouldn't that be, you know, memorialized in this ordinance of what they?
What you, what you'd like to see is more teeth. More, more teeth, more of a.
I think so, yeah. I mean, yeah. Quite frankly.
Yeah.
The rest of the committee is, but if, if this is important enough that we're going through all these steps and we have to hire somebody to do all this stuff, blah, 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 you don't comply, you're gonna have to pay like everybody else does if they don't do their.
So I wanna back it up.
Yeah.
So the FOG program that's been successful, they submit a permit?
Yes.
What is the cost of the permit?
You know, I think if you.
Go back.
Well, there's a link under Section 170.29, there's a link.
There are miscellaneous.
Where the fees appear on the city's website.
They're not in the.
Yeah, I don't.
Not specifically spelled out here, but, but they're direct, people who read this are directed, here's where the fees are, go look at them.
I, I was trying to avoid putting dollar amounts in there.
In the order.
When you see the budget, you'll see the miscellaneous fees at that time. So that, you, you approve that annually.
And that's probably true with the fines, I would imagine, because I know with other ordinances that we reviewed, we tried to stay away from identifying light, I don't know, permit fees and fines, because those could change. Be subject to any recommendation from this committee or from, from the budget.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't care on the city's, you understand my point.
Yeah.
And, and the people that you, that are subject to this investiga, not investigation, but this assessment. They need to know in advance, too. I, I just, I don't like, you know, surprising anyone. And suddenly it's changed and don't, here's what the, the fine will be.
Yeah.
And then refer to whatever.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just feel like if a repair shop goes and submits a permit.
Yeah.
You know, for having this MIU, correct?
Yes.
They know within that permit what the requirements are.
Yes.
Beyond that, would be subject to a fine.
Yes.
Correct? So.
Yeah, not only that, though, if you look at Section 120-32.
The discharge limitation.
And prohibition. So if, if they can't meet the, the limits by changing their process or adding chemicals, then they have to install a pretreatment system that has to be designed by an engineer and installed. And even, and if after that, they still can't meet the limits, then basically their discharge is prohibited and they have to stop. They can't discharge into our sewer system. Is that right, Mr. Tosi?
Yes. So, so, yeah, so miscellaneous users don't usually have a discharge that's detrimental to the point that they gotta do a major treat treatment. But the two significant users that we mentioned, they, they do have their own treatment facility on site to remove metals.
But since it's under, that's under the state, are you, I'm just curious now, is the state requiring you to sort of monitor that or to?
They are required to send me what's called a DMR report every month.
And then they expect the city to actually go in without any reimbursement from the state? Go in and monitor? I'm just trying to.
We, we review the report and yes, it's up to the state, we'd have to contact, we usually, honestly, we contact the, the connect, the person we have a contact with. And usually they're forthcoming telling us, we were a little bit high on this, we made some adjustments and the problem solved. We haven't had a user, but you're right, it could happen. We, we haven't had a user that's been blatantly. Yeah, abusing us. The, these significant users have worked well with us and I, I believe they, they try to do, do a good job treating. Sometimes stuff gets out of whack, sometimes stuff gets out of whack at my facility. And you just make an adjustment, you put in your report and you, the next month, you kind of follow it and see that.
Yeah.
You know, fix the problem.
Where I was going with this is that the state sort of, they're supposed to be overseeing the significant sewer, and they're not overseeing, they're actually requiring the city to.
You're absolutely right.
From the state, from a mandate, I hate to say it, but.
Oh, and.
Another unfunded mandate from the state.
It seems that, although they certainly oversee our wastewater treatment facility, they don't have like skin in the game. They're not doing the treatment day in and day out. Seems, it always seemed like we should be monitoring who's discharging to us.
Right.
Even though they're, okay, that's right.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. So how do we know who's required to follow this? Is that in here?
They have to, they, they have to fill out a the application, which is online for us to review before they, it's part of their, being able to get a CO to open currently. Currently, we've been, actually, last three years, we've been monitoring it like that. We just haven't had it in the ordinance.
So if somebody was to start a new business in Torrington, how would they know that they would need something like this? Like a restaurant's required, small restaurants, like?
Yep.
Something on Main Street?
Yeah.
But in order for them to get their CO, they would have to meet these requirements.
Yeah.
So I think it all links together from the sounds of it.
Yeah, it's like, they, yeah, when they apply planning and zoning, we, we're one of the checklists that has to be checked off, that they have to see us.
Okay. So I think, you know, I'm gonna go back to, so the FOG, the oversight that you have for the FOG program has been a part-time position or?
Well, now, that guy's operate, with this.
Well, that's what I mean.
For the last few years.
Now added an additional.
Yeah. So that, that position was part-time working with the collection crew out in the road and, and then jumping out and going checking, doing an inspection at a restaurant. That's been going on for a long time, up till about four years ago.
Okay. Now with this new state mandate, this is state mandated.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
We now have to add additional hours to this person that originally was just doing the FOG.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I got, I think I'm getting.
Yeah, there's.
Another unfunded mandate, yes. Sorry, but, and I, I appreciate the discussion on the fines, but I think, you know, the intent was not to put any of the fines in here. It would be not of the ordinance committee, it would be within the budget that we approved. I'm not sure we have an influence on the fine, am I right?
There is, there is a section. So if you look at page 25 of 32. Section 170-17, penalties for offenses.
Yeah, okay.
And that references all these articles, including Article 3. Any person found to be in violation.
That's pretty much, seems like it's standard, it's been standard a long time.
Yeah.
For any fines through the WPCA.
We start messing with the limit on these fines, we're gonna have to be looking at all of our ordinances that reference.
Yeah, and I think what I, what I heard Councilman Kevin Arrow express is.
Is it enough?
Wanting to have the fines spelled out somewhere. And I think they are, there they are right there.
Okay.
On 170-17.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just taking the very, very sort of basic, you know, operational point of view that if you are mandated to do something, you either comply or you don't comply. And like everything else in, in the adult world, if you don't comply, there's gotta be a penalty. I'm just saying, what's the penalty? And where do we find the penalty? And does the person who needs to be penalized, were they aware before they decided to not comply, that they were gonna get hit with some penalty?
Yeah, now I think.
Yeah.
That's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah. No, and I was, I was ready to say, you know what, I'll, let's go back, we'll have to take a look at that and make sure it's in there. But I see it, it's in there.
Do we have a record? Thank you, Michael. Thank you. We have, has, has anybody ever been dinged in Torrington for non-compliance?
No.
No?
No. Not currently.
Is, is that possible in a city this size with this many establishments that everybody's in compliance? Okay, so let's assume that they are, we're not catching them, is that because we don't have?
We live in a good neighborhood.
Excuse me?
We live in a good neighborhood.
Well.
I think it's tough.
The, the purpose of this is, is to.
You don't wanna miss an anti-business.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
No, I, I don't, but there must be a, there must be a sound, is there a sound reason for doing this?
Yes.
Yes, what is the sound reason?
It's to oversee the discharge coming to the plant. Could be, could be toxic, they could be dumping.
Correct.
If they're not monitored, they could be dumping anything.
You are monitored, so.
Yeah, but we're not, not to the point where we're popping a manhole in front of every business in town, I mean.
It's almost like every other ordinance.
Like, uh, a complaint comes in.
Right, it's like, how does, how does a violation of any ordinance, overnight parking, how does it come to your attention? It's not like we have people that are out policing these things and.
I don't know, and I agree, I, but, but again, this is different than overnight parking. This is, this is, the purpose of this is to control the, right, the discharge of toxic materials into everybody's water supply system. That's, that's very different than overnight parking, you know, ban, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Primarily, primarily the sewers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, discharge into the environment, right.
Well, into the sewer system, which then has to be cleaned, which is blah, 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 which adds costs to everybody, every taxpayer in Torrington, because now we're blah, blah, blah. You're gonna have an ordinance that's, you know, if you're gonna have an ordinance, there's gotta be some kind of penalty for not complying with the ordinance.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
And there is.
Okay, okay.
I think your question was, it hasn't really garnered any revenue.
Right.
Yeah, which, which seems, which thing goes to monitoring and.
It's.
Problem or?
It, it seems if somebody gets a letter.
Yeah.
That's enough to, for them to get in compliance with the, seems like the threat of the fine seems to work well at this point.
Okay.
So they correct the problem with, within the business. That's what I'm hearing you say. Am I correct? Am I correct to say?
Yes, yes.
Can I say just a general question? This is just FYI, well, for my information, just in terms of the, the two, you identified two large manufacturers.
Yeah.
Fabricators in Torrington.
Yeah.
What about Stone Container and that whole operation, which was, I mean, I've heard just so many conflicting and different stories about what operation is going on there. It's supposedly plastics, supposedly a Chinese company or.
I've, they have not filed a.
Summer Street?
Yes, on Summer Street.
They have not filed a permit with us.
Than you wanna talk about now.
Why?
Well, maybe at another point.
It's on the, it's on the BLIT list. So.
Okay.
The BLIT Enforcement Committee is actively involved.
Okay, okay. Fair enough, Michael, but are they, I mean, just, just, I mean, it just seems like they're, 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 it's so vague when I ask about, in times when I've asked, who are these people, what are they actually making? Are we tracking their discharge? I get, that's really put to the chase. Are we tracking their, and their possibly?
As far as I know, they don't have an industry happening there right now. Hasn't been reported to me. I know, uh, last year, with all that work that was being done on Summer Street.
Yes.
For the drainage, um, under the bridge. We were looking actively at all those lines there and there didn't seem to be any discharge coming out of that building.
Weird, okay. And I ask specifically, because, you know, my father was, you know, um, Torrington manufacturing for many, many years. And when they started going into plastics on their own, were a part of what they were, you know?
That's what you, that's what you, I.
Well, no, no, the, the point was just that, you know, the chemicals involved, you know, there, there were an awful lot of concerns about the plast, the chemicals used in, in large-scale plastic manufacturing or, or, you know, creation. And so I was just wondering if, what we knew about them, since they were on your, um, your, your two largest manufacturers. I was thinking, you know, we, I've heard rumors that there's a big plastics operation there and.
We could certainly try to contact somebody over there.
Well, I don't wanna waste your time. I, I'm not asking you to do that.
Okay, so here, so the only, for the most part, that whole building is vacant. There is one, there's only one company operating there and it's called Industrial Sawz and Machining. Exactly what they do, I don't really know.
See, because you know that, it, it would seem, what you said, like, why wouldn't they come, they should have filled out a, they should have been on our list to fill out a permit.
Somebody should know something about what's going on there and, you know, in terms of, are they, or are they not discharging stuff into, into our sewer supply?
Well, I.
But that's the.
We did, we did pay attention to that last year when that drainage work was being done and what was reported to me from my crew was, there was no discharge coming out of that building.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's, it's, you, you should, I'm not saying your team should be the primary source of this. I, I don't believe that.
Yeah.
I mean, who are, on the city side, there, there should be some other groups involved in saying, what the hell are you people doing in this building? And are you doing it to code of, of all kinds? That's all. Seems, seems a black hole there, that's all.
Yeah, and sometimes the process of getting a CO, if they weren't notified, how did they get a CO?
Yeah, and in the last month, the city's initiated a perm, a permitting system that it seems like it's gonna keep every, all the departments better in the loop. You know, we don't, I'm not in love with it yet, but, um.
You mean the, the?
Everybody's gotta make sure they check off them.
Online permitting, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so that's finally online and working?
Yes. We're, we're working through the kinks, I think.
Okay, okay.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions on Chapter 70, as we identified, it's primarily a language change as well as the new section.
I'm referring to WPCA.
We say that it was 26 of 32.
Yeah, we're at the first three, vegans?
Yeah.
But it's.
So, any other questions on this, Molly?
Yeah, Councilman Iveyne actually just pointed something out. On page one, you cross off Water Pollution Control Authority, it says WPCA instead?
Yep. That's because, that was me just playing lawyer and trying to tighten things up. So the WPCA is in the definition section. And if you look at page seven of 32, the definition of Water Pollution Control Authority prensed WPCA. So just for the sake of brevity, every place after that in here where it's spelled out the Water Pollution Control Authority, I just said the WPCA.
Okay.
Just, just to shorten it up is, that's all. The only other real.
You have a second entity, though. You have WRRF.
So the difference is, the WPCA is the Water Pollution Authority, which is you guys, the city council. So that hasn't changed, but the facility itself, used, and I can't remember now, it used to be called the Water Pollution.
Control Facility.
The Water Pollution Control Facility.
Yeah.
But now it's called the Water Resources Recovery Facility. They just changed the name.
Do we truly have two different entities?
Well, not really.
In here.
It's just a facility name.
Right.
It's more in line with the modern terminology today. We're attempting to change the authority's name, that would take a, a name, a, a change in the charter.
Okay.
So I get it. This is, this is the authority.
Right.
They're the facility.
Okay, makes sense then. But this was a concern if we updated everything.
Yeah, no, no problem.
You know what happens when you get lawyers involved?
I know.
You know, Your Honor, if I had more time.
I was told the lawyerie had to up.
All right, so do we wanna move this for a public hearing? I don't know if there's anything controversy, so if I could have a motion to prove the changes, the edits that are the amendments 170, I have a motion.
I'll move a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, could I have a second motion to, to a public hearing?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Got that, Heather? We'll have to come up with another date. Public hearing. May 20th? Um. Um, it may not be. Uh, it's like, uh, friendly hands, as I said, you bet. I mean, it's how critical it is.
Stop.
Right, so if we can move it to the third? The third? Actually, if that date's good with everyone, why don't we set that as another ordinance committee?
Sure.
Do know that, um, probably a few other ordinance that will be coming to us. Correct?
Um, I think they already have, haven't they?
Well, they're not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda for today, but.
Right.
Um, but actually, so we have, that's what the public hearing is for, it's six-thirty, right? Isn't there a public hearing on, on a few of them?
Any new ones, I thought that.
Yeah, I think the Fair Rent Commission may wanna tweak theirs a little bit more, but.
Good mention of that.
There's nothing really actively being worked on right this minute, but yeah, that could come.
And I know the chief had indicated that they were working that.
I remember the chief mentioning something about an ordinance empowering constables to enforce the ordinances, right, using constables to cite people for ordinance violations.
Rather than marshals, or.
Rather than the police department.
Right.
Right, right.
But aren't they using marshals and they wanna expand it to constables?
No, right now, the, uh, my understanding now is that it's the police department, the police officers who are charged with enforcing city ordinances and fining people, like for snow removal. Dustin Baldis does that, he writes people up, and, and the chief's question was, can the constables that we elect at every election, whenever, however frequently they.
Right.
You were, were you a council, your husband was a council? Can we use constables to do that so that the police don't have to do that? That was one thing he was talking about, and, but I haven't heard from him about that, and I haven't started to research that yet.
Okay.
But that may.
But maybe by June, we will have, have to review.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, any other business from the committee members?
Good.
Non-committee members?
Yep.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
That may, how are you?
So, um, all right, it is now six-thirty, so I'd like to call this regular meeting of the city council on WPCA to. For the record, today is Monday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, uh, we have all council members participating in person uh, this evening, and, uh, thereby have our quorum, um, before we jump into the, um, agenda, could we kindly stand and pledge a flag? All right, we'll jump into item number one, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen to adopt the proposed revisions to chapter thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances, inland wetlands. Did I miss, is it here?
They have a public hearing, yeah.
Oh. I called the regular meeting to order, so now I need a motion to, um, recess the regular meeting, no?
Moved.
We're okay, I heard a motion by Councilman Oliver, Councilman Iven, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, what I need to do is I need to call to order, uh, a public hearing. For the record, it is now six-thirty-one PM, uh, Monday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding revisions to chapter thirty-three, inland wetlands commission.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion made, um, to open the public hearing. Carol, help me. Okay, all right, um, so before we, um, ask for any public input, can I kindly have the public notice read into the record?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will hold a public hearing on Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, starting at six-thirty PM in the City Hall Auditorium, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit public comment regarding proposed changes to the city's code of ordinances. There are proposed revisions to chapter thirty-three entitled inland wetlands commission, proposed changes to chapter one fourteen fees, and proposed revisions to chapter one sixty-one property maintenance. The full texts of the proposed changes and revisions are available to the public online or in the office of the city clerk. Public may attend in person or by Zoom, in-person attendees will be granted up to three minutes to comment. Virtual attendees may submit their comments in writing to the city clerk before four PM on Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Written comments may be sent by email to city underscore clerk at torringtonct.org, or by mail to one forty Main Street, Torrington. Written comments will be forwarded to the Board of Councilmen in advance of the public hearing. Instructions for participating by phone or online are available at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. All interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the tenth day of April, two thousand twenty-four, Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, I was confused by the way this reads, where it has revisions to chapter thirty-three, or chapter one fourteen, or it's actually and, correct? So we're soliciting input on all of these.
We were thinking that the public could choose.
Okay. All right, yeah, I know, I've never seen it done like this before, but that's good, all right, we're, we're there. All right, so, um, the notice has been read into the record, um, at this point, I'd like to open uh, the meeting to anyone from the public wishing to address either chapter thirty-three, chapter one fourteen, or chapter one sixty-one. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council at this time? Because it's a public hearing, I do have to call this three times, I'll call it two more times, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council with regard to chapter thirty-three, chapter one fourteen, or chapter one sixty-one of the, uh, city ordinances? Final call, no, one more call, uh, one more, if I may, uh, one more call to the public requesting uh, input to chapter thirty-three, chapter one fourteen, or chapter one sixty-one of the, uh, code of ordinances. Seeing and hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed, declare this public hearing closed, public hearing is closed. All right, there being, uh, no other business before this public hearing, um, I will have, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Thank you, Councilman Spino, second by Councilwoman Ruette, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I can move into the regular. I will entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen to adopt the proposed revisions to chapter thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances, inland wetlands commissions as presented and unamended.
So moved.
I heard Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
Second by Councilman Oliver. Are there questions or comments on the proposed changes?
I wonder if any council, since it was reviewed by the ordinance committee, whether or not, you know, they needed any further explanation, and we have Jeremy here and.
Any que, do council members have questions?
I, I wanted to ask why, why change the number of committee members?
What, I heard, you know, states can need a quorum.
Yeah, I can speak to that, Nate and Artie Cyrus, uh, inland wetlands enforcement officer in this case, and assistant city planner. Um, so right now, the makeup of the commission is, um, seven regular members with no alternates, and so uh, many applications come before planning and zoning and require a wetlands approval prior to that, and so we were having difficulty getting quorum because we weren't fully filling our commission, so, you know, we would need to have at least four members present with a commission of seven. This way, we're changing the number from seven to eight total members, um, three of which are alternates and five are regular. So then we would only need three for quorum, but we would still have, um, you know, we'd still have five regular members, and we'd have three that would be coming in, um, it's a great opportunity to train people because it is a technical committee. So having people start as alternates and then kind of work their way up to regular members, we felt worked better, and it's, it's, it's the norm throughout the state and other inland wetlands commissions.
Okay, and another question regarding the fines, um.
Well, that's another vote, though, isn't it?
What, what's that?
I think that's, that'll be a separate vote, make one of these.
I understand, yeah.
If make could stay there, that would be good.
Yeah.
Other questions with regard to chapter thirty-three?
We just.
Please, Councilman Kevin.
Yeah, um, Joe, what is the process for, uh, do people apply, or how do they, how, how are we, how are we securing people to this committee? Do they, do they volunteer, or do you, how are we getting people on the committee, Mayor?
So, um, we do an all-call for, um, members, you know, along the way. Uh, we look for recommendations from people that are already serving, these are the kinds of, uh, boards where um, they're people with a certain interest. Um, I know that Nate has been struggling with this and recruit, looking for recruits for a couple of years. We reached this point where it just made more sense to make it a smaller board.
I ask because in general, you know, I understand your problem, and it's just my personal, and I understand it's a real problem, okay? As former chairman of the Board of Ed, trying to get people, trying to get a quorum, uh, my general, my general sense, just, uh, I, I really hate getting fewer people involved
I know.
in the actual operations of government than more people, I think writ large, this is a huge issue at the, at the federal level, at the national level, people, um, it's not like our generation was younger, and, and the awareness of civic responsibility was kind of drilled into us by our parents, grandparents, that does, that exists very little these days, I think. So I, I'm, I'm hesitant to codify small, you know, making smaller th- these boards, but I do recognize that stuff has to get done. Uh, to that point, Mayor, you know, uh, I'll talk to you later about it, but, you know, could I volunteer, for instance, for this one-year um, alternate to see if this is something that I would be good at and interested in? Are you looking for people, I guess is what I'm asking?
Um, we, we're always looking for people, I'm not sure how it works with, um, having members of city council, I can look into that for sure. Um, but, yeah, I mean, we're always, we, we, we take folks that aren't fully trained, but it is a technical committee, so, you know, the, often, uh, as an example for our meetings, we'll have we'll have, um, uh, you know, a professional wetland scientist coming in and providing technical information to commissioners. Um, so it is helpful to have engineers and people with environmental backgrounds, for sure, but we have a lot of laypeople. Um, everyone brings kind of interesting things to, to the decision-making process, we have a lot of farmers on our board right now, we have two farmers, and they, they bring a great, um, kind of knowledge to, uh, especially our agricultural-related projects and exemptions, so, I mean, I'll definitely look into, I, I'm just not sure off the top of my head what, if there are restrictions on having council members serve. I know we have, um, we have a couple members that serve on both ZBA, um, and inland wetlands, so there is some, you know, cross-service, but.
All right, but if, if you're looking for someone, again, on the, just, on, on, on the, this on the fifth, the fifth, uh, alter, no, what am I trying to say here? The alternate that would be for the one-year period, again, just
Sure.
to see how it works out from your side, and if I did do this, uh, from my side, if, if it was a good fit, but I'll just put my, you know, my hat and the ring there, if, for consideration, all right, if you're looking for somebody.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any prohibition, um, having a council member serve on another board, you know, we could certainly look in the charter. I know Board of Finance, there are very strict, uh, rules about that, but it is something we could look into and get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
And we would have, uh, I believe we have at least one vacancy now, but if we went from seven to eight, we would definitely have another alternate vacancy available for that.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
And is there training involved?
Uh, yeah, so, um, there's a, a Department of Energy and Environmental Protection training module that's, you know, uh, lengthy and, and not too engaging because it's all done online, but we, there's plenty of training throughout the year that's both remote and in person that we uh, send commissioners to, there's conferences, um, so, you know, a big, we don't have very strict guidelines for training, there are some. Um, one commissioner on the board of, right now, seven, has to take that state module training, um, and report back. Right now, that's all there is, but, um, but there is plenty of voluntary, um, training opportunities available.
Other questions before I call the motion? And because this is a change to the ordinance, I do need to do this as a roll call? So, call this motion?
So moved.
So, um, starting from my left, Councilman Oliver.
Aye.
Councilman Kevin O. Councilman Ruette?
Aye.
Councilwoman Spino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Iven?
Aye.
I call you Councilwoman? Sorry, Councilman. And, um, Councilman Waldron?
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Councilmen to adopt the proposed new section, chapter one fourteen fees and one fourteen dash three citation procedures and fines for inland wetlands and water course violations.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Spino. Uh, are there questions on this chapter? I think Mr. Iven was starting to ask one.
Yeah, I was, uh, questioning the, uh, total fees, max, is that one thousand dollars?
Yeah, that, that's correct, um, yeah.
Why, why is that? It, it could be a serious, uh, violation of our wetlands, and, you know, what is the, if they just write a check and you know, not do anything about it, what's the corrective course?
So these mirror what's required in statute, so it's really, um, I mean, I, I think a lot of inland wetlands commissions would like to have authority to be able to impose fines longer than that, but, um, we're just following what's available to us in state statute, so it really is it's pretty minimal, because like you said, it would be a hundred dollars a day, and then maxing out a thousand, that's ten days worth of violation. Um, but it could be for multiple violations, so if it's a large, you know, if there's multiple separate violations, each one could get a separate, um, citation associated with that.
Okay. Want to add one piece to that?
Jeremy Leifert, city planner, um, so that, that's what's allowed to be, to be, uh, levied locally. If, if something gets to the point where it has to go to court, you can ask for purposeful violators for twenty-five hundred dollars per day um, from, from, from a court, from the judge. So that, that piece is in statute, too, I just wanted to add that, but locally, it can only be one thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, just to follow up, Mayor?
Please.
Information, has that ever occurred where we've maxed out the, that, the fine, we had to go to the state or to the court? To impose stiffer fines?
Yeah, we don't have this, um, since the ordinance hasn't been passed, we haven't issued any citations through wetlands.
Oh, there isn't prior?
No, this is so, so.
Modification of an existing one.
Prior to this, it's really just, uh, legal action, um, for violators, since we don't have the tool, um, uh, kind of synonymously, you know, zoning has separate statutes that govern it, but with, through zoning, we have the citation ordinance available to us there and legal actions for wetlands, we really just have the ability to, um, you know, to bring them to court.
Is, is this, excuse me. Aside from just following with state, um, um, protocols, is there a reason why we're setting up this fee structure? Is it something that you need, you feel to enforce ordinances or, or?
So for inland wetlands, it is kind of, you know, uh, you're going to situations, o- oftentimes, you'll have smaller violations where um, the fees are a tool to be able to get compliance and, or not, we're not trying to extract money from folks.
No, I understand.
But that really, that gets people's attention when they get, you know, um, a citation with a ticket, um, and brings them in the office and helps us to try to figure out the problem. Often, it, it, you know, they do it comply, they, they comply willingly afterwards, and it's, it's a non-issue, and they've, you know, learned that deal, um, with zoning, so, you know, we're hopeful to bring the success that we've had in using citations for zoning to get people into the office to comply uh, for this, as Jeremy was saying, for larger violations where, you know, a thousand dollars isn't gonna really do much to them. Um, you know, it's still legal recourse, and, you know, we could ask for those fines to be levied to the courts.
Start the process, right? No, we just had this conversation just prior, in the ordinance committee with WPCA about, um, about certain fee structures, and, and it was the same argument. At some point, these things have to have teeth to them, and there's gotta be, you know, failure to comply has gotta have some consequences to it, so. Yeah, so I totally support this, just want to know if this, from your perspective, if this is something that, um, would be helpful, and it sounds like it very much would be, yeah?
Yeah, I agree.
Nate, what, what's your ability to waive the fee if they're, if they created the issues?
So this fee, so the way that wetlands is set up, I would issue a cease and desist order prior to the citation. All cease and desist orders through wetlands go right to the commission, so the commission at that point is kind of in the driver's seat as to whether or not they wanna uphold my order, modify it, or revoke it. So really, it would be. So really, it would be after they make that determination with cease and desist, you know, they would direct me as to, you know, how we wanted to go about the citations. I mean, we're limited to, you know, $100 a day for, for 10 days to a thousand, so maxed to $1,000. But the commission ultimately could, you know, could, could, could make arrangements that way and be flexible. Thank you.
Other questions for Nate? Or with regard to Chapter 114 Fees and 114-3 Citation Procedures? Hearing none, I'll call this motion again. Roll call, starting to my left.
Aye.
Councilman Oliver, Councilman Kevin, Councilwoman Ruette.
Aye.
Councilwoman Spino.
Aye.
Councilman Avane.
Aye.
Councilman Waldron.
Aye.
All right, moving into item three. Again, I need a roll call vote, so the motion would be by the Board of Councilmen to adopt the proposed revisions to Chapter 161 Property Maintenance.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Spino. All right, questions or comments on these proposed changes? None. Hearing none?
No.
I'll do the roll call, starting to my left, Councilman Oliver.
Aye.
Councilman Kevin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ruette.
Aye.
Councilwoman Spino.
Aye.
Councilman Avane.
Aye.
Councilman Waldron.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, all right. Good job on the ordinance committee, you're really getting these things knocked out.
More to come.
Oh, I know, all right. All right, so moving on to item number four, I'll enter into motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4, Subsection E of the City Council and WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedure. Thank you, Councilman Kevin, second by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody from the public wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing none? We'll move into item five. I'll enter into motion to accept the regular meeting minutes for April 8, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Avane. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll enter into motion to rescind the vote to schedule a public hearing on Monday, May 6 to solicit citizen input regarding the closeout of Small Cities Grant, SC 1814301.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments?
Why is that? What?
You know, I, Moret has been working with our, Dan might be able to answer that better. She's been working with our consultant that's been advising us and working with us all along the way.
Right, so generally, someone we're working with for those particular small cities programs, in this particular case, it's A&E Services, which is Peter Testa. He has a public hearing at another city the same night. He can't make it. That's the reason, so we're asking for, to reschedule this for another time.
Sending the application?
No.
No.
No, just adjourn, I guess adjourning the public hearing is really what it is.
Right, the council voted, voted to have this public hearing on May 6th, and now that we can't have it, we're asking to rescind that vote, so we'll schedule it for another time.
Okay, should, should we reset a date?
We're going to work with Peter.
I think Moret's working on that with, with Peter Testa. I'm not sure that they've arranged a date yet.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item seven. This doesn't require a motion, it is just a general discussion, but for purposes of controlling discussion and making sure that we stay on point, I'll call a motion to review opioid settlement funds and the proposed use in accordance with the Torington opioid settlement agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Avane. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so I did provide to the board last week just a general executive summary of what the city of Torington has been engaged with by way of litigation in regard to the opioid class action suits. So in general, as a member of the class action suit against Janssen and distributors, Tiva, Allergan, CVS, Walmart, and Walgreens, and Endo, in general, we've, there were two settlements that were reached for Janssen Distributors and Tiva, Allergan, Edal, it was one lawsuit and they were all named, and Endo is still in bankruptcy. Now, the terms of the settlement agreement with regard to the Janssen and the so-called distributors of opioids, the terms of the payout would be that there would be nine payout years. The state of Connecticut did enter into an expedited payment schedule, which allowed Janssen to pay the first four years upfront and then start with years five through 18 in 2024. The payout agreement with the distributors is an 18-year payout and they are moving through a regular payment schedule. As you could see, those are the projected allocations over the next 18 years through July 2038. So far, the payments that have been received to date is $193,000. Did I send that to you upside down? So $193,300, $251.12 has been received to date. As I had indicated, the distributor has been making their payments on their 18-year payout schedule. Janssen did their first four-year payout at $87,076.15. And then the Tiva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart are in a regular payment schedule. Walgreens has, Walmart, Walgreens have two years to pay and the rest will pay in one year appropriations. So, the great news about this is, you know, the city of Torington, I think, was disproportionately impacted by the opioid crisis. This was something that was clearly evident, you know, through, from 2010 to recent. I had been participating in opioid task force meetings and then when Mayor O'Leary invited me to attend a meeting with lawyers to join in a class action suit, I sought council approval to do so. The council did see that this would be beneficial to the community and I did sign on to those class action suits. They all ended up being folded into each other and it became a national settlement. And part of that national settlement is with the document that you have in front of you now, which is the Exhibit E, the funds. What they wanted to do is they wanted to make sure that these funds went back to work in the communities to alleviate, eradicate, or certainly mitigate the impact that an opioid crisis has had on our community. So Schedule E has a list of, of acceptable uses. There, there were additional expenses that could be charged against this. For instance, legal fees for joining the class, class action suit, you know, any of the time or, or resources dedicated by the city. However, I find that when you have a small amount of money, it's $193,000, and by many standards, it's, it's a good amount of money, but not enough to solve a problem. You certainly want to make sure that you're putting that money to work where it's really a return on the investment, you know, and paying, you know, the hourly rate for corporation counsel that did review every time there was a document that came, came in or to bill my time to this settlement doesn't make sense. Putting it all to work for the residents of the community does make sense. So part of my recommendation to the board at this time is Schedule, it's Exhibit E, Schedule B, Approved Uses, Subsection D, if my memory is, is addressing the needs of criminal justice-involved persons, and, and Schedule I or Paragraph I, which is first responders. So I focused on those, instead of buying one-time leave-behind kits or Narcan stations where people that need the, need access to those medications could get it pretty quickly. I felt those were one-time expenses, but I wasn't sure we would really see a long-term sustainable benefit. After speaking with Chief Baldwin, I met with Maria Kutan Skinner at the McCall Foundation, I met with our Torington Youth Service Bureau, Catherine Ohm, to talk about what they'd like to see us do with these funds. And there was general, general consensus that using these funds to install a social worker within the police department that can work with the community, work with the police officers, if there's a call specific to an address or a family or an area that has every indication that it is drug-related, that the social worker can be part of that response team. Likewise, if there's an incident where our first responders are subjected to some pretty harrowing experiences, there's a certain level of PTSD that goes with that, you know, responding to a house where there may be a child involved. So, a social worker in this instance, I think, provides a great opportunity to make a sustainable difference in how we put these funds to work for us. So that was a strategy that I was using, I, Governor Lamont did appoint me to the Opioid Settlement Action Committee, Advisory Committee. You know, I was following the protocols that that advisory committee was using in their process for vetting applications and uses and feel confident that this board is the right board to make that decision. And I'm leaving it up to your discretion as to whether or not you would agree.
You have questions?
Please, yeah, questions?
Just, we received other monies from the opioid settlements from like Sackler Family Others?
They are in bankruptcy? No. So the Endo includes the Sackler family? It's, it's, you know, they lump a lot of these, these producers and distributors into the same action. So that, that one is in bankruptcy.
How did we, how did the state allocate the settlement funds in this case? Is it based on population?
Yeah, per capita.
Yeah, because Torington takes on a disproportionate, as you're acutely aware, of the issues for our county and the settlement appears small. I'm thankful for receiving it, but I'd like to have an extra zero attached to it.
You and me both. The, so, yeah, per capita. These are decisions that were made, not so much by the state of Connecticut as much as it was, you know, that these are national class action suits. Every county and small, I mean, the state of Connecticut is unusual. We don't have county government. A lot of the states that have county government, it was county-wide that the awards went to. So when you get down to the municipalities, you know, I, I think Goshen received like 50 bucks, you know, so. To that point, however, all of the small towns that did receive funding, I believe there were 12 of the 21 cog towns that said their funds were too small to make any significant impact, so they pooled their resources and the cog is actually dispensing those funds. And the other reason I was focusing on something that's long-term, something sustainable, something that we can measure the impact, when I know that the cog is funding those leave-behind Narcan, Naloxone kits and investing in those one-time harm reduction measures, it was easier for me to focus on this. But, so the 193 is only two years' worth of collection. If you run through the total payout that'll occur, it is a, it's a much more significant sum of money, you know, that you're getting almost $30,000 a year for the next 18 years. Smaller amounts on the Janssen, it's, it starts out larger and then tapers off by 2031, it's 5,000, that's 5,500, and then another 112,000 coming from the balance of the Allergan's, CVS, Tiva, and Walmart. The Walmart check hasn't come in, that's 71,000. So the total amount that we're looking at, that has been allocated to date, that's allocated for the year 2024, from 2022 to 2024, it's 264,000, and then moving forward, there'll be another couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, Mayor, just to be clear, this is, this is a single person? This is to create a position by a single person?
This will be a social worker embedded in the police department. However, I fully expect that this social worker would also be making those inroads and contacts with other social service agencies already in the city that are doing this great work on the, on behalf of our residents and also in our fire department. I do know as first responders that they do have firsthand experience.
Just, 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 I need to know, is, are they part of the bargaining unit for the police? Are they part, they're not technically part of the police department, correct?
So Denise Karpewski is here and she's been working with the unions and with chief to clarify all of those. I don't know if you want to answer that for us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening. No, this is not a part of the bargaining unit. It is a full-time position, though, with benefits and appropriate salary.
Okay, so, but the reason I'm asking is not even so much the, that's part of it, clearly, but when this person goes on call, right, the police, when they go on call, they have no authority from a, would they be involved in de-escalation strategies?
I believe from an appropriate perspective, according to their training, this is actually going to be a licensed clinical social worker whose training is a little bit different than that of just a regular social worker.
Right, but that will be, that will be part of their, the city-defined areas of responsibility, correct?
De-escalation as well as assessment of, of the situation and that person's health and well-being.
Narcotics related. Because a domestic dispute, this person could be utilized to go and de-escalate, is that what I'm hearing?
Absolutely, yeah, because one of the things that we've learned is, to that point, you know, we could put everything in the basket of opioid use or narcotics, but the fact of the matter is, there are all those other consequences of drug use, you know, domestic violence, child neglect, yeah, exactly, so.
House abuse, yeah.
So this is, this will be somebody that is responding to all of that, absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, and I want, the reason I was asking is, if this were a union position, then things would have to be very clearly delineated and I just, my head was exploding. So anyway, so this, this sounds correctly laid out. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Denise.
I know we're not on that part of the agenda in terms of the job, actual job, where, are we moving to that?
Yes, if there are no other questions about how we're going to use the funds or if there's any concern about dedicating them to this single use for now, based on the salary, the $193,000 that we have on hand at the moment would cover approximately two years. With, with that next Walgreens or Walmart payment and the next scheduled distributors payment, we can get a third year out of these funds, but the goal here would be to start moving that social worker into our regular operating budget. So we'll get three years out of grant funds and then we'll start bringing it in slowly, a third, a third, a third, over a three-year period of time.
So if you're, yeah, so first, I want to thank you for your commitment to this issue and saying yes, you know, to serving on this task force, I know statewide and I think And saying yes, you know, to serving on this task force, I know statewide and I think Torrington. Definitely needs to address this issue. My only concern is, you know, is the number of years that the funding will cover this position and you. Just the answer to that, you're going to integrate it into the operating budget for the police. So this person reports directly to the chief.
That is correct.
That's my only concern is, you know, the funding available after three years. If there are no more, there are no further distributions from this lawsuit, but. I'm going to support it because I think it's, you know, a beginning. And the fact that actually some of the pertinent agencies that deal with mental health and addiction services have. Sort of recommend this, recommended this, is that my understanding?
Yes, yeah.
I'm going to support it, but my concern on record is the three years and trying to find money to support it after that.
I agree. I know we never really want to fund operating expenses with grant funds if there's a sunset to it. But because this one has that 18 year payout with $28,000 a year coming in. We can transition this after the third year pretty comfortably.
I trust that.
Yeah. And also I would just add that. As to the extra zeros on the amount that's being paid. The state of Connecticut is getting all those extra zeros in the lump sum that they're receiving or the. The payments they will be receiving. And through the opioid settlement Advisory Committee. Agencies can submit requests for grant funding. So McCall Foundation, Greenwood's Counseling. All of those agencies that are doing God's work with, you know, with a slim budget. When they're focusing on this particular. Crisis, they can formulate some budget requests and submit it to the state for funding. So just because we only have this little pool of money now doesn't prohibit. Other agencies from being able to apply to the state for the extra zeros that they have.
Well, just a further comment, you know, it's their primary function, you know, as another profit agency to really address, you know, these issues. This is really in addition to all of the services that are provided within our community. I mean, I'm looking at the duties and responsibilities. She or he will have to be a miracle worker to complete it, but education to me is like probably the biggest to our. Not only to our police force, but the community at large and the collaboration with all of those other nonprofits, so I feel. You know, this is a single effort, this is a collaborative effort that. Needs to be addressed within our community with other agencies other than municipal.
Well said, I agree, yes.
Follow up on Councilman Iveyne's question. Does, does the, does the Torrington dollar amount for this, does it scale to other like municipalities?
It does.
In terms of Dirk?
Yes, it does. Other questions? This is, again, it was just. Discussion, so I don't need a vote on it. If there are no other questions. Then I would like to move into item eight and entertain a motion to authorize the mayor and the chief of police. To establish a police social worker position utilizing the opioid settlement funds. In accordance with Torrington opioid settlement agreements, Exhibit E, Schedule B, approved uses Schedule D. Address the needs of criminal justice involved persons and section I, first responders.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruet, second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Are there any other questions on this topic? Hearing none, I'll call the motion all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving into item nine. And we have Julie Schornberg here from the Northwest Community Foundation. I'm looking for a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA committee. To withdraw a previously approved community impact grant award. In the amount of $28,000 that was awarded to Allen Associates for roofwork at 40 Main Street. And to reallocate or approve the award of $28,000. To coal fire associates for roof repairs at 40 Main Street.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruet, second by Councilwoman Spino. And the floor is open for questions.
I'm assuming this just because their ownership change?
Yes, so Molly, Councilwoman. Spino and I both serve on the ARPA committee, we reconvened after. A long delay of not meeting. By this request for, for that purpose alone, that the ownership had changed at the time that. This council had already approved it, but it's a technical, you know, change in my, my opinion anyway, so.
I, I think we should approve just based on good pizzas alone.
Oh, it's, it's the Sasso building?
It's Sessos, yeah. It's Nat Cipriano, yeah.
That whole cor, the whole corner?
Right, he now owns the whole corner, yes.
Yeah, they, they own that all now, correct?
Other questions or comments? I'll call the motion all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. And the only thing I will add to that, as Councilwoman had indicated. Pulling together the ARPA Grant Committee. Because these are federal funds. You know, and we do have to report to the US Treasury on these, I really want to make sure that we're crossing Ts and dining Is. So to that end, I do want to again acknowledge Julie Schornberg. Who's keeping us very much in line with what we really should be doing and I'm grateful for that, Julie. Yeah. It's, it takes a village, right? Item 10, staying in the ARPA lane. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Blight Committee, Ad Hoc Lead Abatement Grant Committee. And the Torrington Area Health District to award a grant from our lead abatement grant funds. For reimbursement. Of lead abatement expenses that were incurred at 57-59 Turner Avenue. In the amount of $24,928. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Iveyne, seconded. Floor is open for questions.
Is this a rare occurrence, the, the lead abatement?
So council, last year, the council. Agreed that, that we wanted to set aside $200,000. To invest in healthy homes, healthy homes being. Homes where lead paint. Presents a barrier to families being able to live in those homes. The $200,000 we knew was not going to go very far or last very long. So the first several awards were for small sums of money to do the assessment work and queue the property owner up. For grants through CCMC, Connecticut Children's Medical Center. There have been, but we also left it open that if there were no additional funds available to do the remediation. That these funds could also be accessed for remediation. This is actually the second one that is being funded. With actual remediation work having been completed. Bringing additional housing units back online. And these particular pieces of property also had. A situation where there may have been a child that was impacted with blood levels, lead blood levels. So a little, not. There is precedence, we have done this. It certainly will eat away that $200,000 pretty quickly. But it's, it's good work and knowing that the goal of the ARPA funds. Was, you know, when we sent all of our children home. And they didn't leave their houses for a year, the better part of a year. We knew they were not staying in healthy homes. So I feel good that this is an investment. That will have sustainability, it is going to make a long term impact on a healthy environment for young children.
Yeah, and it's good to bring those properties back online.
Absolutely.
So Torrington has a disproportionate share of older housing stock with issues.
60%.
Maybe to no fault of the owners that they find themselves owning one of these properties.
Very true. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11. Again, it doesn't require a motion or action. But just so that we stay on topic, I'll call a motion. To receive an overview of the city's new online permitting software.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Iveyne. And we're all in favor. It's yours, Jeremy.
All right, so we have, thanks to Richard Lopez in the mayor's office, we have, we have a. Handout that we'll share. So we, we've had a couple of projects that we're kind of endeavoring to reduce our paper load in our offices and. Try to make City Hall a little more user friendly overall. Two initiatives we've, we've done, one, the built, the building department and our department have done. Really extensive scanning project, digitizing all of our, our old permit files. Building Department really did most of theirs last year and we're just finishing ours this year. And the, the second was to, multi-year project to, to get our, all of our permitting. Applications online and our permitting process online. We did sort of have a soft launch of our new permitting software on March 18th. But wanted to wait a few weeks to work out, to work out some bugs and, and get a few other things corrected. But we're sort of using tonight as our, as our launch. For, for our new software, we're working with a company called OpenGov. So it now enables everything to be done online from the, from the applications to the payments to the reviews. Our current process, particularly when you get to the, or our previous process, sorry, when you, when you got to the building department stage. Was to have a paper sign off sheet and we had to hand that to an applicant to run around City Hall. And, you know, sometimes run to the health district and then run that paper back and give it to the building department. Now all of these departments are integrated into this software, so. If someone does not want to step into City Hall, they don't, they don't need to do their, do their permitting anymore, they can apply online. Attach documents, pay for their permits, get their permits issued. So, you know, we're, we're all now trying to catch up to our friends in, down the hall in the engineering department. Who barely take any paper these days, so. So we're all, we're all sort of getting. Getting on the same, same page with that, so. I encourage everyone to, the one thing I noticed though is there's no WWW at the beginning of that, so we'll have to get that corrected tomorrow before we post these. So it's just torringtonct portl dot opengov dot com. So. I would just encourage anyone applying for permits to use this, we're still taking. Until we, you know, we'll, we'll have the conversation with the mayor at a later date of getting, of getting actual. You know, screens or something to that effect in our, in our office to allow people that walk in the door to. To fill out applications there, but right now we're still taking an occasional paper permit. But I'd say since we've soft launched this, three quarters of our applications have been, have been done online. And it's, it's really seemed to be, seems to be running a, a lot smoother at this point. So I think that's, I think that's all that I had. So we're hoping again that this reduces our paper load quite a bit and makes it easier for, for people applying for permits.
Thank you, Jeremy, and the other thing that I would add is. For a small city. It was mind boggling to me that we did not have online permitting.
Yeah.
When Goshen and Litchfield and Norfolk and Colbrook have online permitting and we didn't, it was mind boggling, so. I just want to give credit where credit is due, Jeremy. Kevin Gillette and our building department and Paul Cousins, you know, put their heads together and said. Let's just make this happen.
We tied up Dan for a while on the, on trying, trying to get the financial end of it working and he's, you know, he spent a lot of time.
You gotta get the right credit card machines, you've got to get all this stuff. It, it shouldn't be that complicated to get this thing launched. But I, I have to again just commend the department heads that did pull their resources. Made the commitment to make this happen. And when we talk about the digitizing, choking on paper, it is, it is so. Frustrating for me to know that there's two cabinets full of paper in my office and I know for a fact. Identical paper is down in the treasurer's office. In the comptroller's office and the city clerk's office. And yet none of us want to purge any of that. So it's that, you know, that, do I have the authority to do that? So this I think is really great that they. Building Department did it first last year, Jeremy's wrapping it up this year. Some of the funding to make sure that that happened came out of Carol Anderson, city clerk.
Yes.
Grant budgets. So I'm feeling quite accomplished on that front and thank you.
Yep, and we've, you know, we've, we've seen the, the benefits in, just in the last three weeks from this permitting software, so. It's a, the, the rollout's been a little, a little tricky with some changes we've had to, had to make, but we're, we're in really good shape now, so.
Good to know. Any questions, comments? No, thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
All right. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion by the city council. Here in acting is what a pollution control authority to approve payment of $6,202. And 12 cents from Fund 490 sanitary sewer capital improvement. To Wright Pierce Engineering for invoice 235222. For evaluating the bids for Brightwood Avenue.
So moved, second.
Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city. To award, execute and administer a contract agreement for city center reconstruction project. This is project 2024.1. Going to the PAC Group LLC of Torrington, Connecticut. In the amount of $1,230,296.50. Allowing 60,000 for contingencies. The project will be funded by the City of Torrington Pavement Management Program Bond Fund. As further explained in City Engineers Memo dated April 10th, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver, second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions on this project? Spring is here.
Yep.
No questions, I'll call the motion all in favor. Any opposed? Item 14. I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute and administer. Contract agreement for the High Street Reconstruction Project, 2024.2. Also going to PAC Group LLC of Torrington in the amount of $1,169,394. And 70 cents allowing 60,000 for contingencies. The project will be funded from the City of Torrington Pavement Management Program Bond Fund. As further explained in City Engineers Memo dated April 10th, 2024. Motion, Councilwoman Spino?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Iveyne.
I think the only comment I have, it's nice to see at least the bids coming from Torrington businesses.
There's a considerable, you know, pipe working on High Street, so is, what's the timing of the project? Is it this year? Once we wrap up, the infrastructure changes?
So the only thing right now is the gas company is working very hard and diligently to. Replace their gas main, that was something that we didn't realize until the winter. And so they've agreed to be finished by the end of June on their gas main replacement work, so. Depending on the schedule between, from the contractor. We hope to start and maybe work at the same time, different ends of the street, but. We shouldn't be in, in anybody's way and then still have ample time to finish the whole project. By the end of this year, so both of these contracts will be done this year.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion all. Hearing none. I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right. Item 15, I need the council to agree to add this agenda item, uh, to the, um, agenda this evening. Uh, this is, um, a, um, vote to consider corporation council's request for lien releases. So, um, motion second, and at least two-thirds have to agree to add. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Second by Councilwoman Rouette. Uh, I'll call that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's my two-thirds. Okay. So, um, the vote that I need is, um, I will entertain a motion to authorize a release of liens as listed in corporation council's memo of April 15, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Uh, questions or comments on the request? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector, authorize a tax refunds indicated in the list dated April 15, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Waldron. Uh, questions or comments on this list? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 18, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated in the list.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 19, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Spino. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, so, um, anything from the treasurer's office this evening?
We had a good account payout person started working today. It's been a long road to get one in there and moving in the right direction.
So, and three weeks ago, we have, um, a new purchasing clerk, purchasing department clerk started also. So, yeah. Uh, payroll. Yeah. Um, thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Cousins, anything this evening?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Towsey, anything for PBC? Um, Ms. Karpewski, anything from HR? That's that end of the day is. You're on it.
I responded.
Okay.
Catch you after the meeting.
Thank you, Denise. Um, and in, um, the HR office, we now have full staff, um, in addition to our, um, human resources director, um, two HR generalists that are really hitting the ground running. So it's nice to see that department gelling. Uh, anything from the city clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. All right. Uh, anything from corporation council?
Well, I just, um, would like to say it's good to be back. I was gone for two weeks and it was really refreshing to see that the work of the city doesn't stop while I was away. Um, and also I guess I, I would think this is hopefully appropriate, Madam Mayor, that Barbara from our office has been out ill and so just, you know, sending well wishes to her for a quick and speedy recovery. Uh, and thank the council also for acting on the, um, the lien releases that really just happened today. And I want to thank Moret for scrambling with that because typically Barbara handles all of those things. So, you know, today, you know, Moret spent a fair amount of time getting that done. Other than that, my office is still there.
It is.
Thank you.
Welcome home. All right. Uh, I'm going to move into item 20, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So I'm going to start at my right, Councilwoman Waldron, anything this evening?
I bet leadoff. Yeah, I, uh, I had a tour of the Torrington High School building last week. I was told I was the first city councilman to go through. Does that sound right?
No.
Okay. That was Mario saying that, since he didn't remember anybody else. Anyway, uh, it's coming along well. They've done quite a bit and there's a lot more to do, but it's, uh, pretty impressive, uh, especially where the board of ed offices are. You know, the superintendent's got the corner office overlooking the kingdom, as I call it, when I was up there. So, uh,
Yeah, just what you want.
It's, uh, something.
As long as we got our priorities straight, that's fine with me. Yes. Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
The unit nodding.
Yes.
Almost as if in agreement.
Yes.
And that's it.
It is exciting. Every time I drive by there, I'm, I'm more and more impressed with, uh, how far they've gone, how fast they've gotten there. Councilwoman Iveyne, anything this evening?
Uh, I, I believe you brought it up at a subcommittee meeting that we're not able to tax the solar farms.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah.
And, uh, I, I find that very disappointing since, you know, the siding council, uh, the state siding council really doesn't take our input on that. They, they take really good lands, talking with the local farmers, that they see an increase in their hay prices as a lot of these, uh, lands are taken up by the solar farms. So by, by a factor of two and a half times the, the price. And so they're, uh, really finding a little angst moment on there and then we find that we're not going to be collecting tax on top of that. Um, so, uh, I just, uh, if we could unplug those projects. So.
Put a tarp over them.
So just wanted to state my dissatisfaction with that, uh,
Is that, what do they call that? Throwing shade? He's throwing shade on that? Yeah. So, so, um, uh, and if I, um, was, uh, not very clear, so any solar array under three megawatts does not have to pay. So if it's an array over three megawatts, there is, um, some tax that we can, um, charge off. Uh, so far the, uh, one solar array that is completed up on, um, East Pearl Road, I think it is, um, under three megawatts, no, um, no revenue from that. Um, we're looking, we continue?
Yeah. The land, it wasn't?
It was. No, that's a cemetery. Yeah.
But if it had been, it was still under three, under the,
Yes.
Get an idea, it'd have to be, you know what that was? Just to give us an idea of scale, you know what that is?
A three megawatt?
No, no. Yeah. Compared to what is there now. I mean, I know what that footprint looks like. Is that about, is that one meg?
That's a good question, and,
I wonder what three meg looks like.
Do you know, Paul, do you know what that in, um, East Pearl is? No? All right. No, we can get that answer for you though, just to give you a frame of reference.
Yeah. We just are taking huge chunks of land and we get nothing.
Yeah.
Well, there's another large one going up on,
Silicon Ranch on Highland. So,
That's gotta be.
Well, yeah, and the tricky thing, the tricky thing with that one is some of it's in Litchfield and some of it is in Torrington.
Yeah.
So it's going to be interesting to see how the state deals with that. Um, but yeah, that's a state decision and, um, certainly something worth, um, planning the seeds with our legislative.
State legislative.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. And the other thing is, you know, you weren't serving on the council at that time, but, you know, we were, the council was, um, opposed to the Verage Solar, um, and letters were sent, you know, it was during COVID, so a lot of people couldn't come out to the public hearing or really the, um, it was pretty slick, um, in terms of their, um, of their deal.
No, I know.
Those of us, I think, that were serving at the time, but there was a large objection from the council, but the Connecticut Siding Council moved ahead with it anyway, so.
And if Mr. Leifert was here, I think he'd have a whole lot more to say about that as well.
No, I could say more, but, yeah.
So,
I mean, how does, do, do towns like Torrington, again, do towns like Torrington, are, are we unfairly, once again, this is, this is taking our resources and getting nothing in return. Are towns like Torrington that don't have the political clout of other wealthier communities, are we getting unfairly hit with this stuff? Like we seem to get hit from the state with an awful lot of required services and things that, that ultimately become a drain on our budget, you know, or a net loss of resources, long-term being a drain on our budget. Um, I, and I don't know that. I'm just wondering if we know, if we have any access to where, what, how, how are these sites being allocated? Are all communities being requested to, you know, take their fair share or is it just poor communities are being targeted?
So, um, there are two things at play. Private property owners selling to a developer, a solar array development. So with the, um, Catholic Cemeteries Association, they saw an opportunity to, um, make otherwise non-income producing property income producing by having these solar panels, um, placed on their property. So, um, so when you have private property and private developers, um, no influence, there's certainly no influence that the council or our planning and zoning commission can exert, um, except that we, nine out of 10 times, they'll ask, will the city provide a letter of support? Um, and nine out of 10 times, the answer is no, we won't provide a letter of support. Uh, yes.
Time out. When you say provide, does that come through a city council for support?
Yes.
Or is it, is it planning and zoning that they would get that from?
Well, it's more planning and zoning, but these topics have come before the council, as you know, with Verage. Uh, Verage not only, um, was looking for, um, support to put that array up, working through our land use, um, office and planning and zoning commission, um, it was determined that, you know, there was, there would be no letters of support sent to the siding council to say, yes, this is a good idea, let's put this in this, you know, really nice, uh, residential neighborhood on formerly farmed farmland, because even though it was owned by the Catholic, uh, Cemeteries Association, actively farmed up until a couple of years ago.
And they, they actually denied that, which was,
Yes. They, yeah. So the siding council is autonomous. So the one thing that I will say is Torrington as a distressed municipality is also, um, what they, what they call us, um, an environmental justice community. Now, that's something that I think we haven't played that card yet and maybe what we should do is right after the legislative session, bring our legislators in to say, all right, as an environmental justice community, we're poor, you know, we've got to, you know, we've got to hold on to any of these large tracts of land that could potentially be a housing development or continue to be farmed, you know, and there has to be some leverage that we can exert because of that.
Yeah, please pursue it. I mean, I, I would be behind support you, any initiative of that, of that type, absolutely. Just pushing back, letting them know, no, we're just not going to roll over because
Yeah.
we are not making, we are not the squeakiest wheel in Western Connecticut.
Yes.
For getting stepped on again.
Well, you know, and I, I will always say, a solar array on a landfill where there's virtually no future use of that property is one thing, but a solar array on farmland, that it was actively haved or, it is, it's, it's very difficult for us to,
Yep.
sit back and,
And, and the concern is, you know, a lot of farmers are struggling. If we have just a handful of farmers, if they grab those lands, uh, for this use, that, that's a future food source.
Mm-hmm.
That will impact our community. No one thinks that hay and big fields has a food impact to us, but it really does.
And then remove the taxable income from it.
Correct.
I mean, it's, it's a perfect storm of, you know,
I know.
Good there.
It's a punch in the nose and a punch to the gut.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, we leave it to, and then I, I don't know, do we, is there any recourse for maintenance of those? If there's maintenance issues with those, the technology advances, they become,
You know, the trees dying around it all the time?
Well, no, as the technology advances and they move beyond maybe those solar, what happens is, who's going to be, what do they do afterwards? We seem to have, would have, as a city municipality, have almost no say in any of that. We, we lose that property for generations, you know?
If it is, There was evidence, you know, and there was, you know, reports from farms not in our area, you know, large farms where the solar panels had no longer, uh, either the lease was up on the farm or on the solar farm or whatever, that are just there.
Right.
And I don't think there's any plan. And I'm not against alternative energy, but, you know, I don't think we've really thought this out.
I, I agree, agreed. And, and we all know, the nature of technology, again, you know, in my prior, my work experience was in the technology side at, at ESPN, technology advances so quickly that what happens is, you know, there will be a new generation of solar generating panels of some type that will, you know,
Efficient.
You know, these things will be obsolete in very short order and then they're just abandoned. And, and this will happen and happen and then they become an actual negative impact on the city. Not only they're not a positive, but they become blighted and, and we need to, I think, get ahead of this conversation in some way.
So I know that with the siding council, decommissioning of any, um, array that is no longer functioning is part of the plan. So, so there is a responsibility to those developers to take them down when they're no longer, um, effective. Um, but, you know, that's 20, 30 years from now and I'm not going to be here to make sure that that happens.
No, I know. But, but as, as we know, as, as current city, uh, a, a current govern, governing body here, things that were not done 20, 30 years ago, that impact this now.
Mm-hmm.
We know how troubling that is.
Correct.
And, and we need to, you know, try to avoid those situations. And, and I would just add, Mayor, that to decommission these things because it is no longer a functional thing, you know how, you, you know how easy it is to skin that cat where you basically, you maintain it with 5% functionality and you say, well, it's still operational.